Being a bit late, if we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here this evening. I guess before I start, I'd just, you know, on behalf of the board and obviously on behalf of the community, I'd like to extend our heartfelt sympathies for the folks dealing with the tragedy today in Pittsburgh. It was near, frankly, where I grew up, so it hit a bit home to me. And, you know, I think that, you know, we're obviously keeping all those families in mind today. Can I get a motion, please, to accept the agenda?
Seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I'd like to turn the microphone over now to Dr. Harrison for the fields and facilities discussion.
Good evening, everyone. Certainly nice to see many more faces in the crowd tonight. This has been a part of the journey and part of numerous, numerous discussions. We've been witnessing representations from the Board of Education Buildings and Grounds Committee that has made recommendations regarding facility improvements or repair. We had a wonderful field projects committee that spent an enormous amount of time focused on reviewing the options available for the Zarros Field and East Field as well as Ole Track. And tonight we've come to a bit of a piece in the conversation and looking at, or considering decisions, critical decisions. One that has been made already has been the focus of East Field, and that has been determined that East Field will be renovated with a natural grass playing surface. That will also include, of course, a substantial drainage system to meet our needs and be able to best maintain the field and also to help our neighbors in the field. So tonight, we are going to have conversations kind of focused on Zarros Field, Ole Track, and, of course, the facilities projects. And when we come back to the last meeting, which was April 1st, where this was discussed, we reviewed all the scope of projects. And there were some recommendations, some direction that was given by the board. And the first item was looking at the Mar Gym. And we were thinking about converting the existing lights to LEDs for energy conservation to improve the quality of life because it is very dim in that gymnasium. But it was determined that we may want to look at that as an alternate. There was conversation in the Buildings and Grounds Committee last week, and so we've taken that off as Tier 1 list. We're going to consider that and possibly a different approach that when we go out to bid, if there are monies available, we may want to contemplate doing this as an alternate. We also discussed the idea of adding a construction manager to this project. And the reason and importance behind that, I think, a lot of folks have counted out. We want to make sure that these projects are managed well. We want to make sure that the contractors adhere to all aspects of the contracts that they would have with the school districts. Concern here goes well beyond that. We want simple, quality construction. We don't want to have issues uncovered down the road. We want a independent body that's going to overlook and oversee this type of work and make sure things are being done right and being done well. So with that said, we are looking at a slightly revised scope of projects, items in Tier 1 where the facilities were. And we're looking at a number of different items, and you can see their range here in accordance with the size of the cost of the project. We're looking at unit vent and HVAC upgrades at Dow's Lane, energy savings, quality of life. We're going to have an environment that's where the children need, and we're going to have more comfortable learning spaces while saving more money in the process. We're looking at replacing the roofs at Main Street Gym. In doing so, it's a necessity because the rooftops are at the end of their useful life. We're looking to move the district offices from the existing modulars, which are well beyond their life, and moving them to Dow's Lane. In the process, creating the new office space for Dow's Lane Administration, creating an ADA compliant bathroom, doing some fire code upgrades in the building. And as you look down on the list here that you see before you, there's a number of items that are tied, of course, to energy cost rating. Looking at a conversion of boilers at Main Street School from oil to gas saves about $25,000 a year. We're looking at adding vestibules to the IMS entrance. There's single glass doors on either side. It's frigid in that lobby during the winter. We constantly have dirt and dust blowing in, which presents maintenance problems for us in our schools. We're looking at upgrading boiler controls at Main Street School and the campus. Ever since the additions to the campus were constructed, we've been dealing with gross pipes. We've been controlling them as well. We had many issues this past winter. We have areas in the building that are warm and areas in the building that are cold because we really have no control over certain aspects of our heat, either off or on. So the boiler controls certainly add a great deal of efficiency. And then we're looking at some lighting conversions in gymnasiums to really try to save some monies in those areas. So when we look at these projects, we're including costs related to a construction manager, which adds maybe about $40,000. And then, of course, conversations that we've had around fields, we can see a total, grand total, of shy of $5 million. So when we think about the debt service impact, we have to recognize that we have some debt retirements at the end of next year, and that debt is a bond of about $3.5 million. So we have to think of the impact that costs neutralize on taxes at anything at that level. If the board was to decide on a bond that was to be less than that threshold, you'd see that service drop. And, of course, if it was higher, the two hours would increase proportionally. So tonight, we look to the board to make some decisions on the scope of the work that's going to be included, facilities, projects, fields, and track. And then we have to look at where we're going to hold this bond should the board decide to move forward. So to recap the decisions that are before us, looking at athletic facilities. What's left on the table, Ole Track. We're looking at renovating the track, removing the existing rubberized running surface, milling the surface, the track surface that is there, putting the new foundation of asphalt down, and then applying a new rubberized track surface. And then there's really been discussion about two different options of artificial turf related to Mizarros Field. One being 100% organic infill. You can see a cost of just under $1.4 million. And then a combination of a hybrid product of a crumb rubber and a hybrid top layer for just shy of $1.3 million. Then we are looking to the facilities projects that I just discussed in detail and determining which of these would make their way into a bond. And, of course, the timeline. The timeline, as we've discussed, is something that makes us anxious, makes us nervous. We need a lot of lead time for our engineers and architects to be able to design all the specs of these projects, to be able to submit these projects then to SEB, the State Education Department. And in doing so, that's where the concern comes forward. We're looking at situations where SEB is telling us they need about 26 to 28 weeks to approve projects. We have one example from a district not too far away, that they're entering the 28 weeks next week and still do not have their approval. So we have concern about where these dates are. The farther we push them back, we have latitude to push it back, but we have to look at things on the other end. If we were to have a bond vote date in September or October, we're really concerned about SEB turning everything around in an appropriate amount of time. And then us being able to do all the necessary steps that we have to follow through, including advertising bids, awarding bids, allowing contractors time to have their materials on hand and to certainly have their staff ready to go. So we have concerns. We've moved dates back and forth in discussions from the end of September to beginning of October, as you can see here. It's a decision that doesn't have to be made tonight. As we recognize that these are the initial decisions that are going to give our architects direction to begin their design work. The board would actually approve, officially approve, the scope of this project at a board meeting in June. So we have some time to work on that September, October date. Administrative preference, our contractors through our engineers and architects' preference would be September, but it's something that has to be evaluated moving forward. So with that said, Mr. Grados, the discussion is the board and the community.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. You know, I know that the board needs to make some decisions this evening. So what I'd like to do is first ask the community, I know that many of you were here to make comments about this initiative, I'd like to invite the community to come up so we can hear your comments first. I do want to say that, you know, the decision is to move forward on these certain projects, and it doesn't mean that we're done answering questions. It doesn't mean that we're done providing specifications or providing data to the community because ultimately, we're not doing this because we want a bond to not get approved. We want the bond to get approved. So if we can't answer all of your questions this evening, the administration will endeavor to answer them afterwards. And throughout the process leading up to the bond vote, if anybody has any questions, we're going to make sure we answer those to the best of our ability. So with that, if anybody wants to address this before the board convenes, please go to the microphone and say your name. And I'm just asking that you limit your comments to about three minutes.
My name is Paula Morley, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Friends of Irvington Football. There's no question whether or not we need to address the horrible condition of our playing fields. We need to repair and upgrade our fields, and we need to install at least one artificial turf field. Thirty-five of 46 districts currently have artificial turf. Three more will be installed this summer, and of the remaining eight, six are proposing or half-proposed artificial turf. Due to the shortage of playing fields and the amount of time spent on them, we do not have the luxury of giving any field downtime. Since Mizarros Field is used for phys ed class, practices, and games, it would make sense to install artificial turf there. A grass field would just not hold up and would be a waste of taxpayers' dollars. Initially, the cost for artificial turf is more, but due to the maintenance cost for grass, the cost evens out over time. Fortunately, we now have organic alternatives for the infill on artificial turf fields, which is an added expense but is well worth it if it is safer for our children and the environment. With an artificial turf field, we will no longer have to deal with postponements and cancellations. The football program will no longer have to worry that an athlete could be injured on our field due to the poor conditions. We will no longer have to tarp and blow dry Mizarros Field in order to have a home game or no longer have to travel to another school to play our homecoming game. And we will no longer have to follow weather forecasts and worry about the havoc even a minor rainstorm could cause. Tonight, I ask that you do the right thing for our students and our community and strongly consider the recommendations of the field committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi, Esther Samori. I live in Tarrytown. As a member of the Fields Committee, I'd like to express my appreciation for the opportunity to serve it. There was a lot of common ground in the committee. For example, we agreed on a natural turf field for East Field. We agreed that the condition of Mizarros Field is extremely poor. We agreed that our four fields are interdependent and that we all support our athletic program and we all value our fields. There were differences of opinion, though, about how to achieve our goals. Some members of the committee were committed to explore whether natural turf was a viable option for Mizarros Field for both environmental and cost reasons. Understanding the way the field is actually used was of prime importance. You can't just take the number of hours that our sports teams play, add youth recreation, sports, and PE, divide that by the number of available fields, and come up with a number. Raw data needs to be synthesized before understanding can be reached. For example, when sports turf managers say that a natural turf field can be used for 700 hours, they're talking about 700 hours of professional athletic play, the hardest use. PE is negligible use in comparison, which is why it is typically not used in such a calculation. Raw data might include PE hours, which accounts for half of the stated use for Mizarros Field, but synthesized data really should not. Take those hours away, and we are under 700 hours of use for Mizarros Field. There are other examples of the difference between raw and synthesized data that I could mention, but it won't because of time. When we see a photograph of Mizarros Field after heavy snow melt and rain, we see a field that has not been restored in over 20 years, that has compacted soil, poor drainage, and is, to use a dramatic metaphor, in cardiac arrest. This isn't the result of natural grass. If we took a photograph of Memorial Field the day after rain, it would look beautiful. It is instead the result of a field that was not well-designed or well-constructed and that hasn't had the bypass surgery it desperately needs. A new generation of natural turf scientists have re-engineered what grass can do. Fast-growing, soil- and climate-formulated grass seed is generations removed from what is on Mizarros Field today. Some of us have learned from a natural turf expert that different grasses, supported by new fertilization techniques and innovative maintenance protocols, can support our athletic program. Several of our assumptions regarding natural turf fields also appear to be outdated. They include the number of hours a field needs to rest, faster and more robust growing grass seed, which requires two months rather than three seasons to grow, increased durability because of innovative maintenance techniques, and targeted irrigation, which ultimately saves water. If we install artificial turf at Mizarros Field, we won't gain much more playing time due to scheduling, daylight hours, and because Mizarros is our primary game field. Unless the district commits itself to installing lighting, the field is currently used about as much as it possibly can be. Artificial turf will not give us more hours, and artificial turf does not help us solve some of our other important problems, such as the poor playing conditions of Upper Dow's Lane. I'd like to suggest that we instead invest our resources into building and maintaining the four natural turf fields that we own. In particular, I'd like to suggest that the district engage Jared Minnick as a consultant who can look at the plans for East Field and immediately evaluate Upper Dow's Lane Field. I'd also like to see a bond that includes an option for a natural turf solution for all four fields because I truly think that such a solution can serve our district's needs while being environmentally sound and sensitive to our school budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak, please?
Hi, my name is Roellen Bishop, and I'm sorry I was not prepared, and I hope that I can get my thoughts across succinctly. I moved here to Irvington two years ago from the west, where there was no lacrosse. And since that time, both my children have taken up lacrosse. And we have absolutely embraced the sport year-round. And I'm shocked and saddened by the fact that it's April 9th and we have yet to even practice outdoors. It's an amazing community. I wouldn't have chosen any other city. But I also am a member of the SBGA Association, and in speaking with all of the other school facilities, there has been an absolute thumbs up for artificial turf. So while it might be wonderful to explore these other options in the other fields that need some assistance, to have one field that we can use without any restriction would be amazing. We have been, it's just incredibly sad when you see this varsity lacrosse team trying to hit balls off walls. And having games canceled the other evening and having to scramble to another school because there was maybe an eighth of an inch of rain after it had been dry for a week. So I'm sorry, I wasn't more prepared with some more details, but this is an amazing community, and the sports are huge. It bonds a very tight group. This group has welcomed me in, and those relationships have been incredibly significant. And it's incredibly sad if this isn't taken seriously. Like I said, I've spoken to tons of people in the facilities level, SBGA, and everyone, I would say, resounding 95 out of 100%, absolutely endorse artificial turf and what it's done to make their programs easy. And the parents to be able to be there because the days are reliable. You're not even sure of what will happen with our schedule. And for working parents who want to participate in their children's lives, it's really, really difficult on a day-to-day basis, waiting for that email to see, can we play, can we not? We can't, oh, we're off to scars day. So I really, really hope that we can move that way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Hi, my name is Mike Friedlander, and it's my first board meeting ever. I grew up here and didn't even know where the room was, but this is a very important project to me and my family. I've been coaching youth sports here for over 10 years, and we need better fields. I think we're all in agreement upon that. And when I heard that there was grass was being considered last week as another option, I was really shocked, to be honest. I go to fields all the time, all over the county. My sons play on travel soccer teams up and down the east coast. Everywhere we go is turf. Every college we've been to, every new stadium that's built, it's turf. There's a reason why. Why would we do anything different? The reason why, it's better. It's easier to maintain. It's better for the kids to play on. Look at the snow we've had. Okay, when it snows, I don't care how good a grass field is, when it snows, you can't get the snow off it. You leave it there. If it was snowing in March, we wanted to, lacrosse wanted to practice, soccer wanted to practice, baseball wanted to practice. You get the snow off the field and you play. Mercy College is a great example. They put a new turf field down three years ago. Their teams practice on it all year-round. The weather is not an issue. Okay, you have grass, you have to maintain it, you have to protect it, you have to be very careful of it. Okay? And we don't have any other fields to use. That's our main field, Mizarros Field. We have to have that available all the time. We pound it and pound it and pound it. Whether it's 500 hours, 700 hours, 900 hours, it's irrelevant how many hours a grass field gets beat up, it gets destroyed, no matter how good the grass is. I played in college on Bermuda grass. It was the new greatest thing they ever invented 25 years ago. That got destroyed. Okay? A good turf field is going to last. You don't have to maintain it. You're going to play on it, snow, rain. I was over at world-class facility in Rockland County last Saturday. It had rained all day. My son had an 8 o'clock soccer game. There were 12 games played that day. His game was fine. No issues, no anything. The turf is there, there's no mud, there's no anything. You just played the games. I don't think it's even feasible to consider putting a grass field where Mizarros is right now.
Thank you.
Hi, Allison Wagasback. I live in Irvington. I have a kindergartner and a fourth grader. So I have no experience with Mizarros Fields, other than hearing about it and seeing pictures and seeing all the time that it's closed whenever I come up here for other things. I was really struck by the 35 out of 46 districts in Westchester having turf fields. And I have a fourth grader who's just started travel soccer, so we have started traveling around the county. And it is pretty amazing to see how many high schools in this county that even we've been to recently that have turf field. What makes me really happy is that we are focused on having an organic fill field. I feel like that is something that we're, that's the statement we're making about our environmental and health focus. Right now, my son comes home with tire, ground-up tires in his shoes, as does my daughter, because they're playing on turf fields other places. Whether it's indoors, my son started Little League. He can't play outside anywhere yet, so they're playing it on track. And my daughter's playing at other fields and comes home with the same stuff in her shoes that he does. So the fact that throughout the years, there's a chance that they'll be able to play on a field where they're not playing on organic, or they're not playing on crumpled-up tires and instead they're playing on something that's organic fill, makes me happy. I would love to see a beautiful grass field at Mizarros. I mean, I think that would be neat, but it doesn't sound like it's functional. And it seems like this is a battle that we've had over the years. And I hope that the community can realize that we have to sort of live in the reality of the situation that we're in, and we want all of the students to be able to play their sports, whether they're in kindergarten or seniors in high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to make a comment?
Linda Pierpont. I run the youth lacrosse program, and while I don't expect that youth lacrosse should get to use Mizarros Field, the trickle-down of having fields closed and high school sports playing on Dow's Lane is going to make it very difficult for most of the youth sports to even get much time on Dow's Lane. That's going to be somewhat helped by remediating East Field. But like Allison said, the future of interscholastic athletics in this area with the weather conditions that we're up to is certainly to go with some sort of artificial turf. Because we can clear snow, we can play after a monsoon, we have lost contests, meaning, I don't mean win or lose, I mean, lost them on our home field to go to other places through different sports seasons because we can't play even after a big rain. And even on a wonderful grass field, you're not going to want to tear that up after that time. So you will still not finish that contest and perhaps have to go finish it. One time we had to, there was a football game, we had monsoons here, they played the next day, the last five minutes of it, so you had to bus all the students somewhere to play five minutes of a game because it had to be finished on an artificial turf field at the opponent's venue. It just seems to make sense these days. The organic fill is certainly going to be a plus for some people. The hybrid option is, or those are the two that we put forth from the field committee. But the fact of the matter is that we do want everyone to be able to play on grass and be outside. We're not going to be outside if we keep a grass field. The weather conditions have gotten to the point where no varsity athletes have been outside for much time yet, except maybe the baseball teams because they've been playing on the town baseball field. And snow removal, rain conditions, all of that, the amount of artificial turf fields throughout the county, let's give our student athletes what we've given our academics and our arts facilities over the last 10 to 20 years of all of the upgrades we've had in this school district. To me, the last piece of the puzzle is fixing all the fields but providing one artificial turf field to really ensure that we get everybody some equal playing time. And I have spoken to athletic directors in other districts who do say that PE does make a difference on the grass and that, in fact, the opinion is that because the phys ed kids are not necessarily knowing that they want that field to be good for later when they're playing their game, that there's less opportunity for them to really care about what's going on. So I'm not convinced that PE doesn't make a difference. Our PE classes could have been outside today. It was a beautiful day. You could have had 6th through 12th graders in the fresh air, and they were inside still because we can't be on that field.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? Going once, going twice? Sir? It always works when you do that.
I'm Brady from Irvington. I was on the Fields Committee, and I just want to say that we put so many hours and a lot of work into this project, and we did try to hear every side, every view. And I sincerely believe that we came up with the best option. When I heard that there was a possibility that we would still think about grass on Mizarros, I really, it was like a blow to the gut because if you were part of what we were doing, there's fact the other view, but it makes no sense, board, to go to a grass field for Mizarros. If you do it, you won't get support from the community, you will be throwing good money after bad, and you will be back at square one. So to consider grass in Mizarros just makes no sense. I think you have to respect the expertise of the people that we listen to and the proposal that we put forth. Any other direction would be a mistake, and you'd be letting down Irvington as a community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? Going once? Going twice? Okay, thank you all very much, and thanks to everybody in the community who's provided emails and phone calls to us over the past months to weigh in on this important decision. I guess what I'd like to do, because the focus of most of this has been on the fields, and really since I haven't heard from anyone on the board, a real desire to pursue the hybrid rubber versus organic and that it seemed to be that organic infill, not only from the community standpoint, but from most board members who have spoken, has been the preferred method, to put forth a motion to approve going forward with an organic infill, artificial turf, and also to approve the refurbishment of Ole Track. But before we do that, I would like to provide the board, before we vote, any time to make any comments that they'd like to make to the community before undertaking this vote. If anybody wants to begin, I'm happy to yield. this vote. If anybody wants to begin, I'm happy to yield.
Yeah, I got it.
I mean, I have some, you know.
Sure.
Usually like to say something. You know, I'm really sympathetic. Well, first of all, I want to, you know, thank all the people who put in, I'm sure everybody else on the board feels the same, all the people who put in all the time and all the kinds of iterations and coming to these meetings and everything. And, you know, I think everybody just wants to figure out what the best package we can put in front of the community, so we really do get fields in place that everybody can play on and do physical education on and everything else, because that's what we want. We don't want the situation we have now, where we have a sponge sitting in the middle of Mizaros Field that nobody can play on and East Field closed. The, you know, I think we're, Bob, it's a point of order, Bob. Are we gonna take up the, are we just gonna confine right now our discussion to Mizaros and the track?
I was gonna do that, then we'll move to the projects next.
Yes, I won't talk about the projects, because I do have one or two things on that. I think, and that includes the construction manager thing, which I do want to talk about, but that'll be, we'll keep that separate then, okay, for now. So, you know, I think maybe, you know, there's been a lot of information back and forth about usage, and people have gotten kind of focused on that. And, you know, I don't feel like I have a perfectly clear picture of where that comes out, but I've sort of started to think that it doesn't completely matter whether I do or not. I've come, my view has been that I think it makes sense for us to have an artificial turf field. It gives us the flexibility to have different types of surfaces, to have that field that will be there for all the circumstances. I'm, you know, my sense is that just about anybody who's got kids involved in relevant sports is for this thing. And if it were a negative thing for those people, for those kids, I think we'd be hearing it from some minority of those parents. But I don't think we are, and I may be wrong. But I think that weighs in favor of this. But I really think it's about flexibility. It's about giving us both good grass fields and an artificial turf field. I had a little time to kill yesterday in Riverdale, and I went down to see Riverdale's field. It's a nice, nice little thing. They had lacrosse practice on there, and some kids in gym shorts doing something. I couldn't tell what, only 15 feet away from all these lacrosse balls. But, so, it looked like a nice facility. I think, I think we'd be happy to have that kind of field, and I would support it. And I think an organic infill is a positive way to go. So I would support that, too.
Thank you.
Okay. I really do appreciate, I know Bob and John have said this, I do appreciate all the emails and comments and phone calls that I have received regarding both sides of this issue. It's something that this community has grappled with for a very long time. I do think it's very telling that the majority of the school districts in Westchester County, whether it's village or school district, has at least one artificial turf field. I think even politically, the easy answer is to have all grass fields. But I truly do not think that we can maintain four natural turf fields, maintain them the way they need to be maintained, and that we could play all of our games and not have any consequences. I think if we had one artificial turf field, we could properly maintain our other three fields and improve those conditions, actually. Not just maintain what's there now, but we need to improve what's there. I think that, I think very highly of our employees here and of our custodial staff. I do not think we have enough fields, we only have four. And I don't think if we invested the kind of money that would need to be invested, I still think it would be throwing out money. I really don't think we can maintain four grass fields, unfortunately. So I too am, I feel that the artificial organic infill field is our best option, given what we have here.
Thank you.
Well, I think, from my perspective, after hearing the Fields Project Committee, and thank you again to the Fields Project Committee for the work that you did, is that there is an inherent risk in considering the grass field solution. And that risk is borne out by what we're seeing today with our own fields and the use, the overuse of those fields. There's a possibility that, as Esther suggested, that with better drainage, with a different topsoil, with different seed, that we could have a grass field on Mizaros and be successful. There is a possibility for that. It's just that that possibility, in my view, is probably low. It's about probability. The probability is low, because we're not experts in grass turf maintenance here at Irvington. And hiring somebody might help, but it also might not. And because we would be spending a lot of money to install a grass field, there is the possibility that we would be wasting our money to install a new grass field that would actually fail us. And in my view, failure is just not an option, given everything that we've had to endure as a community with a poor Mizaros Field, and even before East Field went out of commission. A synthetic turf field offers us the probability of 100% uptime, basically. It actually gives us more capacity, even taking the analysis out of the equation, because we know that we can get snow off of a synthetic turf field more quickly, and we can deal with issues of playability after heavy rain on a synthetic turf field. I'm also persuaded by the fact that we are considering, and we are recommending, a organic fill, infill, because clearly chrome rubber, chrome rubber is sort of an unattractive solution for our kids. I just couldn't feel comfortable with that solution, with knowing that my children might play on that field someday. But I know lots of kids do, and so it's not totally uncommon. But I feel a lot better knowing that we would have an organic infill solution in Irvington. I think in the end, I feel that a artificial turf field is just a much less risky proposition. It gives us a high degree of confidence that we will have a playable surface all of the time on that field, even if our other grass fields should fail for some reason. And I certainly hope that we will do a better job taking care of them, once we rehabilitate upper and lower Dows. But I think that a grass field is not a slam dunk, and an artificial turf field is very close to a slam dunk. And I also want to say, I say all of this as a kind of practicing environmentalist in a very fundamental way. I raise chickens, I keep bees, I have a compost pile the size of probably most people's lawns. I've actually actively tried to get rid of my lawn for the last 10 years since I've been home, which sounds a little weird, most people like their lawns. But I've been moving my lawn back closer and closer to my house and putting in shrubs, and essentially recognizing that lawns aren't exactly environmentally friendly, if you read about it, because you have to mow it and water it and everything else. So it's a little odd for me to actually sort of recommend that an artificial turf field.
Seems you're consistently against grass.
That's right.
[laughing]
The natural turf lobby hates me.
You like other plants?
Right.
Well said.
But, I mean, I, you know, I make this decision reluctantly, but with all of my intellect, that it's the right decision because of what we need in this town for our kids.
I guess I'll echo a lot of what my fellow board member said, so I'll make it brief. And I think, you know, thank you to the Fields Committee for all the hard work. I really appreciate all the people who sent emails and who are engaged and who are here tonight, because that speaks volumes to us about what the community is interested in. I think, as Phil said, there's, through this process, there might be a chance that grass could succeed. And, you know, assumptions might not be, you know, a number here, a number there. But I think what it all comes down to is, what is our biggest chance for success? I've been through this a long time, more than you guys. And, you know, what's right for the district, what's right for our kids, everything to me comes back to the kids. And ultimately, if we're gonna undertake this, and we're gonna have to pay for this over, you know, the life of the bond, you know, it would be prudent of us to select the option that we think has, you know, is gonna work, is gonna be feasible, and is gonna be feasible in 15 years, not just next year. I also think to Maria's point about, you know, I think our maintenance staff is phenomenal, and I think they do a good job. And I just think, you know, we don't have the level of expertise that a professional sports team would have to maintain our fields or to focus on the fields. So for all those reasons, I think it makes a lot of sense to look at our fields as a system of four fields, one of them being artificial. I also, for the same reasons, feel that the fully organic is the right way to go. And then the other three being grass. As I mentioned at the last meeting, I, however, do think it's important to see if we could pull in some other monies to the referendum. I know we have more time for this, to upgrade Dows, because I really think the success of our fields as a system is what's gonna make it work, when you only have four. And if two of them are not in use, then that's gonna put an undue burden on the other two. So to me, it's very important that if we do it, we do it right. And that includes figuring out what, is it irrigation, is it drainage? I know we started to look into that. So that's important to this piece as well. And then the last piece that also weighs heavily is, I think, you know, to a large degree, it's what we're hearing from the community as a board member. And, you know, I think clearly the community as well really wants the opportunity to vote on this and to make that decision. And for all those reasons, I'm in the same place as the rest. Organic and artificial for Mizaros.
Thank you. This is one of the rare times that I haven't, I don't have any prepared remarks, but I do want to thank all members of the Fields Committee. I learned a lot in the process. I mean, this was something that, even when I came on the board, and I guess I could say that now, since I'm one of the old people up here, was something that I knew needed to be addressed from, that wasn't addressed by the community prior to my time being on the board. And I learned a lot in this process. I mean, I think I've spoken individually with about, probably about 80% of you, and I think folks know me, that I don't, I don't come into things with a preconceived notion, because I really don't care, in this role, what direction we make, or what direction we go, as long as it's in the best interest of this district. And when I say that, in the best interest of our children, but also in the best interest of our property values, and keeping Irvington strong. And I think the two are tied together. I am convinced that going with an artificial turf field is in the best interest of this district, not only with our children, but also in the best district, best interests of the district, in keeping our school district strong, and in keeping our property values high, and in keeping Irvington a sought-after place for people to want to move, as we've seen in the last couple of years, as the markets continue to come back. So I'm very happy to hear the comments of my fellow board members, and I'm happy we've gotten to this place. I guess now, just so we can give the, John?
Just, one other thing I just forgot to mention. I want to, you know, I think we've all, I guess we've all come to the, you know, more or less agreement on this. But I want to, I think there were, there were three people who had been on the Fields Committee who continued to develop information about grass after the report. And though it appears we're not going in that direction, and I think for good reasons, I think that, I think we're, I'm certainly grateful that they spent the extra
Absolutely.
...time to continue to probe and make sure we were getting, you know, had all the possible information in front of us to make the best decision we can. So I, you know.
No, well said, absolutely. I agree. Okay, now I guess if we could, can we act on my original motion to approve moving forward with an organic infill, artificial turf, with enhanced drainage on Mizaros Field, and the renovation of Ole Track? Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to the facilities portion of this, I don't know how best to, and maybe, maybe Phil or Maria, you folks might be better to lead this part of it. I know that there was some back and forth about, and we've discussed this over the past few weeks, about projects coming in and projects moving. I believe that this is where we ended up. So I don't know if anybody else wants to speak about any of these individual projects again, or whether we should move to a motion to approve moving forward with this.
I, I mean, one thing, I mean, I said it last time, I'll just say it again. The one thing that just, to me, doesn't sit, I mean, I'm comfortable with everything except for the dust ball, and I just find $141,000 is a large amount of money to put asphalt on that dust ball. And I know that to some degree, I'm reassured that if we do go out for bids and it comes in lower, then it will be lower.
If, when?
When.
Right. We will go out to bids.
Yes.
We must go out to bids.
So that is
If we approve it.
Right. But on the same token, you know, everything else is either preemptive or cost savings, and that one, to me, is, I know it would be, you know, better for the kids, but for $141,000, it seems like a lot. I know you've done your work, so.
No, no, no. There's another point that I think you're missing. It's not purely aesthetics. Yes, it seems costly, $141 for asphalt, but you also have to understand that all this additional dirt and dust that comes into the school is having an impact on our HVAC system that's in the school. We're cleaning it more, it's, it's, it's
But that's why we're spending $100,000 on the vestibules, in my opinion.
Well, no, that's also a heating component.
Right, but you also, I mean, part of the, part of the rationale was the dust is getting in, and the double doors will actually
Right, but it's also getting up on the roof. It's coming from the inside, and it's coming from the outside as well. So the vestibules will help somewhat with it. It's still gonna get tracked in, that dust is still getting into that school, however you play it out, whether those vestibules are there or not. It's still gonna get in. And it gets in from the outside also, because the big machines are up on the, on the roof of the main streets, of the middle school, sorry. So it's not, I know you and I have had this discussion, it's not just aesthetics. If it was just aesthetics, I would agree with you. But it's more than that. It's, it's having a, you know, an impact on our systems.
I just think, I mean, spending an extra $100,000 to do full organic infill, that makes sense to me. Spending $150,000 when there are bathrooms that need to be replaced, and it just, I just struggle with that. It seems like a high number for what we're getting in return for it. And that's, you know, that's just my, where I come out on it. So, and other than that, I'm comfortable with all the other facilities improvements, I think. Thank you so much for all the work you guys, I know you've met like twice a week for the past two months, and, you know, you put in a lot of time, and, you know, I really appreciate it.
I think part of the reason why we ended up with that solution was because we were trying to get the cost down, but still solve the problem fundamentally that children, students, need a place to play. And that while adults probably feel, would rather have a more well-designed area in between those two buildings, and would really appreciate that, that kids ultimately just need a place to be able to play. And, you know, asphalt doesn't sound like the best place in the world to play, but in the end, you know, most of us, many of us grew up playing on asphalt, this and that, it's not the end of the world. And it is a very low-cost solution to that particular challenge. Remember, the one that we looked at a couple of years ago was over $300,000. And we did ask them to look at cheaper solutions, it's just we could not find anything.
This was the cheaper solution.
And just to, maybe it's obvious, but they, aside from the dust issue, the currents, the current configuration, which is dirt or dust, depending on how wet it is.
Mud.
Mud, yeah. It's not, when it's mud, it's hard for them to play on, obviously, when it's, well, it'll be ice, it'll be ice anyway with asphalt, but they can't play.
But you could plow it.
You can plow it.
But you could plow it.
Oh, okay.
And clear it.
Yeah, all right. Or play snow sports. You know, build a hockey rink or something.
You can do that when I'm off the board.
You know, it's just, to me, it's a priority thing. And it's just lower on my priority list, perhaps, but I understand all your reasons, they make sense to me. You know, I'm not saying it doesn't make sense, I'm just saying it sounds like a lot, and it would be lower on my priority list. And some of the other things that were pushed down on our, the list you gave us, I probably would move up in case. But that's just me.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah. I would remove the, my I would remove the, my preference would be to remove the high school gym lights. I don't understand why we still have that there. I know we, I know the Mar gym lights were removed, but I don't understand why the high school lights are still there and I'm concerned about all these gym projects and I thought that was one where we didn't have, face any urgency on.
Well, I think we, we decided to keep that in, John, because we debated it amongst ourselves in the, in the committee and there was a strong feeling that as our sort of signature gym, the gym where all of our main indoor sports are played, that the lighting in there is so subpar, it's dim and it's unattractive light. It's just a very inadequate facility and it's a little embarrassing that, you know, in such a short period of time, we're essentially conceding defeat, saying we have to replace these lights. It is a failure of the original specification that was done, you know, 10, 13 years ago, but that, just because it was a bad decision back then, doesn't mean that we should concede and say we're not going to change it and we're going to live with it. The feeling is that it's really unacceptable lighting in that gym and it's our main gym and that's why we kept it in there.
No, it's true. I mean, a lot of these projects, some of these, not a lot, some of these projects that we're doing is because the, when they built the middle school and the additions, there was no oversight and a lot of things were either cut or done subpar and these lightings are a perfect example. Wrong fixtures were installed, actually the original lighting, the wiring, I found out, was actually the wrong wiring and he had to redo it again. But the fixtures are too high, they're not the right fixtures for that gym and it's very dark in there. And that's, that is the reason why we kept it on.
Okay.
I mean, if you go into the Gina Mar gym and then you go into the campus gym, you see clearly a huge difference in lighting. It's, and I was actually in there today after our safety meeting, I took another walk through. It's a bright, beautiful day, it's got windows all along one side, double doors on the other side, and it was so dark in there with the lights on.
I mean, it's not something I know very well, but.
But that's the reason, that's the reason-
But that's the reason why we kept it on.
The Harlem Wizards might have been the last thing I saw. That was some years ago. I might have one or two, one or two other things. The, I also, you know, I also have a question about the construction manager. We could tackle, again, I don't know if that's, we're at that point or not, but I-
Sure.
-feel like I wanted to, I want to understand, I want to have somebody tell me kind of, again, what, how that person's job differs from what Land is doing for us, because we're, we're compensating Land fairly well for, for running these projects and so I think it needs to be explained how they're different and why we need two different organizations.
Who wants to take it?
I mean, I could do it, just because it's sort of what I do for a living, I, you know, I, I deal with the construction of real estate and monitoring things from behalf of lenders and borrowers, you know, an architect, and I don't know if we have any architects in the, in the room, I mean, they, their job is to make sure that the work is essentially being done in conformance with plans and they do check the work from time to time, but a construction manager is on the site on a daily basis, dealing with issues with the contractors, dealing with issues between the contractors and the architects, making sure that the right type of product, that is supposed to, the wiring, for instance, the right stuff is going in, the right fill is going in. You know, you wouldn't expect an architect to be on site every day, that's, that's not what they do as part of a construction project. They're brought in from time to time to, to, to look at progress against the plans that they've prepared and have been approved, but really a construction manager is exactly that. They're managing the construction process.
Well, maybe I don't understand, is Land just, I'm not sure I fully understand what Land's job description is then, are they simply an architect?
Yeah, you folks can speak to that.
As an architect, they would draw up the plans, submit them to SED. They would oversee the entire project, but again, they're not on site every day. And I can use, I'll just give you like an example, if you were pouring concrete.
Right.
When you pour concrete, it's not in one day. You have to put down the rebar, you have to put down the other grids. Architect may come in on day three, after the rebar and the, the sublayer has been put on, and just check the top to, okay, it's level, it looks good. A construction manager would be there to make sure that the rebar was put in at the right level before the other pouring, because they're on site all the time. Does that help?
And can I add one more thing?
Okay.
Because we lived this and I think you have to, you don't have to go back too far to look at the master plan and the building of the middle school here. And we had architects and, and this was before my time, so I'm not going to take the responsibility for this, but I could tell you the aftermath was not fun, which is, a lot of things were not done to spec, a lot of the costs that we're currently contemplating for the past 10 years have been to make good on problems that the original construction was built with and we did a big study as to, you know, what the problem was and where we spent, where we were supposed to spend money that we didn't. And one of the conclusions that we came up with about, I think it was like six years ago or something, was that, you know, there wasn't a construction manager on site and no one was overseeing this. So, okay, yes, we have losses, some of them probably still going on, but that doesn't get us to a better place, so I guess I get back to the same theme, which is, to me, $40,000 in the grand scope of this gives us such a better chance for success moving ahead, that it's hard for me to contemplate doing this after what happened with the new construction without a, a construction manager.
And is that enough money to have somebody here on site all the time to do that?
Well, don't forget, this is not projects that go on for 365 days of a year, you know, it's, it's short-term.
Well, it's, we have construction in Dow's Lane we're talking about, we have field, this is for field, the fields too, right?
It's for everything.
Right. So we have-
Right.
-fields work, which will take, I don't know, a few months, please.
We, we got some estimates from folks in the industry and other school districts that anticipated that if you look at the scope of a project that would run over the course of a year, that you would, you could estimate about $80,000. So when we have a look at the scope of the work here, we anticipate that we'd be looking about half a year. So we're, we believe that $40,000, based upon the guidance we've received thus far, is a good estimate.
Okay. I mean, that's, I'm convinced. Do we have any other questions?
Can I ask an operational thing? Are you, John?
No, go ahead, I'll, I'll-
Operational question, because as we're sitting here, seeing we're comfortable with this, we technically, as you said in the beginning, we're not voting for the referendum until June. I just, my concern is just that once we see how the budget won't grant, we might want to look at the total number that we're looking at and, I don't know, I'm not sure what I'm thinking, but then we might want to, we might not, we might not want to go as high as $5 million, maybe we decide for whatever reasons, economic reasons or whatever the current situation is in June, how the budget won't grant, we might want to reserve the, the ability to, perhaps if we all agree, take that down a little, if we think it would give our, give ourselves a better chance.
Right, just know that Land has to start working on these projects and these bid specs now.
Yes.
And so that's, I mean, we could pull-
No, I understand that, yeah, but if for whatever reason-
But that's money we're spending.
We decide, oh my God, we really need to pull $100,000 if that-
I, I, yeah, I don't think we need to decide that now, I think that's always an option.
Right, just an operation.
I, I'd rather our focus be on getting to the point.
Take a picture.
We could take what the work they've done, Shelby, for a year or two.
Sure, well, yeah, of course we have that option, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. What are we doing on Dow's? We have some numbers, we got on Dow's Lane, I mean, what are we, when do we take up the issues with Dow's, with Dow's Lane?
Fields renovation?
Yeah, well, it's not renovation, but, you know, our question is whether they need, you know, a little nip and tuck or whatever.
So Land has done an initial analysis of the fields and the belief there through their initial assessment, and granted, we haven't had the opportunity, nor we have been given them the direction to do an extensive review. But initial analysis, some basics, peaks at the soil, when we look at each of the Dow's fields, that we believe that there is, they believe that there is good, healthy soil, that they would benefit from additional aeration and enhancing the maintenance protocols. Initial thoughts are that upper Dow's could benefit from some improved drainage, such as a slit drainage system, as one option, which would be minimally disruptive to the existing plain surface. Overall, that when we look at where we're going and looking at maintenance costs, a lot of it, they, they believe, with the exception of the drainage piece, and adding some irrigation to lower Dow's and potentially lower, lower Dow's, that, you know, it's, it's, you know, a situation that's manageable and maintainable, but we would have to up the ante in what we're doing, we, from a maintenance protocol. And those are figures that would be worked into operational budgets, not something that you would necessarily be bonding, with the exception, you could bond-
The drainage system.
The drainage system and the irrigation.
You could bond irrigation work.
Yeah.
But the ongoing maintenance would need to be integrated into operational budgets moving forward.
Okay. It, it sort of seems to me, well, the irrigation in lowers Dow's Lane is maybe $10,000, right? So it's, it's not going to be too challenging to find room in even an operational budget to pay for that if we want to do it, so.
Yeah, I agree.
And the rest of it, we're, we're going to be looking at finding a way to make sure that the maintenance gets done and, you know, even in years when we're not paying close attention to it, hopefully.
But I, I mean, I think we should talk about the sand slit drainage system for $90,000. If that's going to make a difference on Dow's Lane Upper, which also is a game field for us, you know, I, I think we should consider that, I really do, in this referendum, especially in light of, didn't I read today, you, in looking into this, you found out that there is no law about if the, if a bond vote goes up, there is no rule about you have to break ground 18 months later, there's no timeframe. So given that there's no timeframe and when you have to take, break ground, it seems like it might make sense to find a way to put the $90,000 in this referendum.
I think it's a good idea.
I mean, again, if we don't pull the money out, we don't pull the money out, but it gives us the ability, if we decide at a later date, we're ready to move forward on this to do it, so.
So I guess, I guess in moving forward, these were very preliminary numbers, sort of back, I mean, I would say back of the envelope, to get us some answers. Is the direction that we want to give to give us more information and to find out truly what the costs are on the drainage system?
I guess a preliminary question is, is there a, is there a water problem on upper Dow's Lane? I just-
There isn't necessarily a water problem in, in the way that we discussed there being a water problem at Mazaro's Field, or the needs to install drainage at East Field from a maintenance standpoint.
Yeah.
But Rich does believe the field gets soggy after heavy rains and if you were to install a drainage system, it would speed the drying of that field, you would have a turf that would be less vulnerable after a rain or periods of extended rain, that it would be beneficial in the maintenance of a quality turf.
Okay, so-
I think we want to know more about it.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's get some more information.
I would like to see, regardless of what goes on with the bond, I actually think it's quite apparent that we need to install some sort of irrigation system at lower Dow's. If we're going to make a commitment to maintain what we have, we need water, we need to be able to, as, you know, everyone knows, you aerate, you seed, you do all this stuff, that's minimum, but if you don't have a way to water it, I think it's kind of throwing out money. So I actually think-
I agree.
-now is the time, we need to make a commitment and really look into installing some sort of sprinkler system now, going forward, sooner rather than later at lower Dow's.
But then I guess the question is, do we find $10,000 in this budget that we're going to be talking about in a few minutes, or do we roll $10,000 into, you know, 20 total if you look at the two fields, into the referendum? I think that's-
I would like to look for it now, I don't want to wait. I, I think regardless of what happens with the bond reference and we have to maintain what we have, we need a water system.
Okay, that's a good point.
And just to be clear, we're talking about lower Dow's and not lower, lower Dow's.
Right, right.
But I don't, lower, lower Dow's is a very small field, right?
Right, but we do use it. Yeah, we could use it, why not?
Who uses it? I, I, kindergartens.
Oh, they, they use it for lacrosse, the, the community lacrosse, schools use it.
It's big enough for them to play on?
To practice, it's practice, but they're not playing, they're practicing.
Not for games.
Yeah. It's a practice area.
Well, that, that said, the, the ASO soccer does use that for games?
Yeah.
They use both Dow's Lower and Lower, Lower for games with the little kids?
Right, well, it used to be just the U6 did it, right, kindergarten?
Yeah, yeah, but that, yeah, so they're all-
That was the one, I think, when East Field was in better shape. We haven't at East Field, so we'd have to make it to lower, lower this year.
Okay, so we'll get, we'll get some more information.
It's front yard, maybe.
Doesn't happen.
Your kids are getting old, John, your kids are getting old.
They are, they are.
Okay, so can I, can I get a motion then to approve the matters set forth on slide seven, moving forward on the facilities projects?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Thank you very much. And now I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Harrison again for, for a budget discussion.
Okay, so, again, this has been a long conversation and a long journey and I think we've come to a point where there's been a large degree of consensus among Board of Education members in the direction that we're going. And after the meeting on April 1st, there was limited feedback and direction based upon desired changes with respect to the budget. And tonight I just want to introduce what those changes do look like. There was a request to look at enhancing our music staff with an increase of .4, which would be impactful to the services that we offer to our students in the secondary schools. We were seeking to restore some of the classroom furniture purchases and classroom painting. Each of those three had been deleted by administration through the dialogue that took place when we were wrestling with trying to get back and forth under cap as those numbers fluctuated. Additionally, there was recommendations from the board to seek the opportunity to begin to do more additional capital work within the budget itself, using operating funds. And by doing so, the example that's before you is looking to renovate a boys' bathroom at the high school for a cost just greater than $80,000. Some, some great logic was shared and the consideration that if we can find a means to afford this as a one-time expenditure, we're avoiding the compounding interest that would be incurred if this was to be included in a bond over, say, 15 years. There was also a request to provide some more professional development, to provide additional resources to our guidance department, so in doing so, we've added another $3,700 to funds that we had already increased, $6,300. So we're looking, total budget, we're looking at a sum of increased monies going towards our guidance program of $10,000. So from the last budget to this proposal, you're seeing an increase of about $177,950. There was one item where there was a recommendation for a reduction from the administrative proposals that had been on the table, and that was to eliminate the proposed communication services that had been discussed. So with all that said, and there's been a lot of up and down and back and forth for this journey, we still see before us quite a robust budget, a budget that is not only fiscally responsible, but one that introduces plenty of opportunity for our students with the commitments enhancing program, improving operations across the district. And before you is a lengthy list of approximately $575,000 worth of new initiatives, directly tied to student learning, directly tied to maintaining our facilities and investing in the future of our schools. The, therefore, the proposed budget that you see before you tonight, you can see there's been shifts, you can see how we've added the additional items as recommended by the Board of Education on April 1st, as well as the reduction. And in doing so, we come forth with a budget with a grand total of $56,294,000. This represents a budget increase of, a budget to budget increase of 4.11% and an estimated tax rate increase of 3.36%. tax rate increase of 3.36%. You can see the impacts here in contrast to last year's budget, where the district was over the salary cap as approved by the voters, but this year, you see, we are still $817 under the current tax gap. You can see the related tax impact on the average assessed home in the community, again, these are estimated figures, and we're looking at the average home again, which is valued at approximately $750,000 within our school district, and you've seen an estimated change of about $538. Again, a five-year tax levy history, and you can see that trend, I certainly don't need to communicate this to you, but the one thing is what I want to highlight in the bottom red, it is the lowest tax rate increase we've seen in the district in four years. So it's something that we should be proud, and certainly nice to see the numbers heading us out. So tonight, much like the previous conversation, we're looking for Board of Ed and community dialogue. The administration is seeking final guidance, our next Board of Education meeting is Thursday, the 24th, after our spring recess, and at that point in time, I will proudly present the proposed budget for board adoption, so tonight would be the night for any final modifications if necessary. Couple other opportunities for discussion along the way, I didn't delete the other, the first three, but I want to say that this has been a busy week, this has been the fourth budget discussion that we facilitated. There was a forum at the public library on Monday, which unfortunately was very lightly attended. We had a wonderful meeting at Good Shepherd Preschool where we had, I'd say, 15 or so community members that were in attendance. We had a very positive, productive conversation at the senior center yesterday afternoon, and attended by about 25, 30 community members as well, and then, of course, tonight, and then you will see the meetings that we have planned going forth to continue to seek feedback and answer questions, and certainly are open to add another opportunity between now and the 20th of May, which would be Election Day.
Thank you, sir. I guess the, the last format works so well, I guess I'll try it again. Is there anybody in the community that'd like to make a comment about the, the budget or any items before the board gives its final direction to Dr. Harrison and the administration? Going once, going twice, Mr. Rizzulo, anything? You're good?
I have a question.
Okay. This was, this was like, you know, the Jedi mind trick, you know, this was-
You're pulling a Karnak on me.
That's right.
Actually, my, my one question is, is the Board of Ed or the school budget similar to the village budget whereby if it's close to being near the tax cap, would it not be prudent for you to, to approve exceeding the tax cap? I mean, the village has to vote on doing that before they can actually do it. Is that the same for the school district? Because at $817, I don't trust anybody's math.
It makes, it makes a difference for a school district on how you put the vote out. If it's under the tax cap, then you only need a simple majority of 50%. If you go over the tax cap, you have to ignore the resolution differently, and you need a, at least 60% supermajority.
No, I get that, but, but the point is, there's a pretty complex calculation, for the village at least, that, that they have to use to get to what their actual tax cap number is. I don't know whether that's the same for the school district.
Yes, it is.
All right, so for the third year in a row, the village board has voted to exceed the tax cap, but in fact, they're not going over the tax cap. I don't know whether that situation is the same between the schools and the state.
Well, see, the, the difference is, we don't, the board doesn't do that vote here, it's the, because the district voters have to do that vote.
All right, well, it doesn't really answer the question of, of whether you make a mistake on your, on your calculations. In fact, you may, if, if you make a mistake in the, in the calculations, you may actually go over what the tax cap is.
If there's an error in the tax cap calculation and it went the other way, then you have to put the additional amount that you went over into a reserve fund, and that would be deducted from the following year's tax cap.
Okay, so that is the same as, as the village requirements? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments, questions, stories?
Oh.
Okay. Hearing none. Thank you for the, the presentation. I don't know if anybody wants to start, I, I don't have anything to add at this point with respect to the budget.
I do, too, but go on.
Okay.
Do you want to start?
I'm happy to have you start, but-
Okay, a couple things. And one is kind of a general, I'll start off generally, which is, it's been kind of an interesting year for budget planning because I felt like we were a little bit all over the place. I mean, first, we had this very high tax cap, and we were, we could try and figure out where we wanted to come up, and then we found out that, that, that was actually much lower, and then we had to cut, and then we found out that we were getting money from the state, and then we added money back in. And the reason that I'm framing this like this is because I think in hindsight, and it's easy in hindsight, but this is mainly more for moving forward, that I, I kind of started to feel uncomfortable a few weeks ago as we're doing this thing, because we always seem to, for practical purposes, pick up where we left off the last week and then kind of move forward to the next point. However, given this process that we saw, I'm not sure that if we actually did have a long-term plan and clear priorities laid out, that we might have ended up in a slightly different place. Too late this year, but I then, I get parking back to what we have talked about a lot, which is, if we can put in place clear priorities upfront, long-term plan, then it's easy, if you have these issues come up, which do a lot, to just go to your priority list. Okay, well, we already have established our priorities, so I don't need to pick up where I was last week, I really am picking up where the district's priorities are, and I just feel like we could do better on this process in the future, and I think this year illustrates that. And it's a weird year, I give it, I've never had so many kind of changes week to week, but feeling like I'm not sure if we started from scratch, knowing what we know now, we'd be in exactly the same place, and, and maybe we would. So I just put that out there, as we think about making the process better moving forward, we figure out a way to clearly establish what's, you know, what kind of a district we want to do, what's important to us, lay out the priorities, and then it's very easy to handle these kind of curveballs that get thrown. So, okay, now that's my general, I do have a, one, I did get a couple of comments, actually, based on one of the meetings that you had last week, and, and it's something that I kind of talked about a little bit and feeling uncomfortable with, and, two things actually, but one in particular, and this, I, I kind of looked toward the athletic trainer, and I, I'm little, the numbers seem a little out of whack to me. I, I don't, I guess, at first, I guess my first question is, what are we anticipating that we will spend on a trainer this current year? Because it's my understanding that the 30,000 in this budget is in addition to what we're spending this year. So I'm trying to figure out what's the total amount we're looking at for an athletic trainer in this budget. I, I just, I think that's a fair question to, as opposed to any increase, I'd like to just know, what's the athletic trainer?
Total sum, I believe, to be $40,000. So we're looking at-
Total.
Total, so we're looking at an existing line of approximately $10,000.
So this year, we're spending $10,000?
Yes.
Oh, someone had, thrown around a number of 40 to me.
Yeah, the sum becomes 40, so.
The total becomes 40, okay. So, and my next comment is, I took the 30, and I can do this calculation quickly, but based on a $30,000 number at $35 an hour, which is the cost, I believe, that we're billing a trainer out, we're looking at 857 hours of training. And I'll just, I'll make it simple, I mean, you could talk weekends and whatever, I'm kind of going to assume it all averages out, but that means if every single day of school, 180 days of school, we hired this person, they would be here for 4.7 hours a day. And then I look at your field presentation, and you say, well, we have competitions, or we use the fields, from 3:30, it said 3:30 to 6:00 and 3:30 to 7:00, so either one you want to take. This number, to me, is, is even in excess of, you know, when we're actually having kids on the field.
Basketball.
What about weekends?
But I'm saying, this is, this is every-
But you're thinking of the private-
But I'm saying, we don't have, we don't have people practicing and competing every single day of the year, so I'm just, for the purposes of simplicity, I could go back and figure it out. It's, it, the bottom line is, this number seems very high to me, and, you know, we used to, as you said, we usually spend 10,000 on a trainer or whatever, I could see going even to 20,000, but all of a sudden, we are going from 10 to 40, and it seems to me that, you know, I'm, I'm confused as to how we need to make that colossal jump, what exact, I understand what you described, but this isn't a medical doctor, and I, I just, I, I don't understand how we're, how it is prudent of us as a district to spend $40,000 on a trainer when we've been spending 10 in the past. It just seems huge.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
That I learned today, only because of, and feel free to jump in if I'm not saying this 100% correct. It's not just the piece of also going to the games and managing what happens on site. There's also the management of the, is it the impact test? Okay. So ideally, all kids in this school district should have a baseline for this new concussion policy. Unfortunately, Artie's job and everything else he does with, that's not the case. The higher priority sports, like football, they have their baselines, but there's a lot of sports, current sports teams, not even the whole population, just the current sports teams, they don't have a baseline. So what happens is, and I only know this from personal experience because I'm going through it right now, my daughter didn't have a baseline. So because she didn't have a baseline, she had to get an MRI done because certain things presented itself in an examination. So there's a whole management, there's, in addition to giving the, the test, so there's a baseline for the kids, once, if they have an injury, you have to test them again, but there's this whole return to play protocol, all of this, Artie tries to manage in his limited time, but this is something, I was on the phone with the doctor yesterday trying to figure all this stuff out, this is also something that is not currently getting done that needs to get done, and this would also fall under the experts.
If, I guess, what I also am not clear on is, what is the certification? I mean, if we were hiring a doctor, I would kind of agree, but I don't understand-
Well, these are trainers who are, these are, you, you-
Certified athletic trainer.
Right.
So athletic trainer is measuring whether or not, it sounds to me like it's, it's not putting the district in a liability, I'd rather have a medical doctor.
No, it's not, it's not, every college does it this way.
And by the way, also, you should also know, the doctor has access to all of this data, so our school doctor also has to sign off on everything, so just-
So just as a point to, really, as maybe a prelude to Artie's comments, there, it is a certified athletic trainer, it's a specialized education program that focuses, where they don't have a medical degree, it focuses on the treatment and identification of athletic injuries. In fact, Artie and I had a meeting today with a community member who we've met with a couple times now, who is a neuropsychologist at a, a very reputable local medical center, and the conversations that we had focused in and around all of these types of training and protocols with a specific focus on head injury, concussions, and as we're looking to improve what our procedures and protocols are in and around that, he reinforced the value and the necessity of having the increased hours of a trainer, to have someone on near full-time capacity is what this would equate to. But with that said, and as Mrs. Kashkin said, you know, this looks at a full scope of different, of student injuries, but the one area of grand concern is that around concussion management, and we are getting things done, we are doing, fulfilling the protocols that we have to, but we have people without the expertise and training that are monitoring student progress during the return to play protocols, which are all outlined by, with medical guidance. So with that, I wanted to provide that context, Artie, if you could respond to the specifics.
Right, so the athletic trainer would be the person involved in monitoring the process. The school doctor is the final clearance and final sign-off on the return to play once they've gone through the process. So Maria's daughter is going through day one of a process that will be analyzed each day in terms of return of any symptoms. Right now, there's no trainer here today, we don't, because of the part-time nature of it, we don't have a trainer on staff today, we didn't have a home contest that required a trainer, so we had a coach who analyzed her 20-minute cardio and how she was feeling afterwards. If there were an athletic trainer kind of taking us through that process, we, I, I went back to the numbers, last year we had 15 concussions in the district, currently at this point in, in the season, we have nine. So each one of those concussions has kind of what Maria spelled out, and with a consistent type of monitoring of that return to play, and there's back and forth, there can be with the parents, it can be with the school doctors, so they'd be very involved in that, in that process. And one of the things that we spoke about today was, you know, some of these other type of checklists and baseline tests that maybe can be administered on, in addition to the impact test, and we had the conversation about giving that to coaches to do, well, a lot of times, those coaches are by themselves without even an assistant coach, so to have that responsibility of giving a kid a sideline, you know, test that would clear them to go back in, I think that would be a little bit difficult to do. So obviously, having a trainer there as often as possible would be that. And going back to your point about the hours, what I would foresee, and, and I've talked to other districts who have full-time trainers, they look at them as on staff from 2 o'clock through the last contest or practice, and during the winter season, those contests can run until 8 o'clock at night, with basketball contests that aren't starting until 6, 6:15, 6:30. So the hours are a little skewed when it comes to getting in here at 2, getting kids prepared for practices, assessing any other minor injuries that students might have, taping prior to games, getting things prepared for what you want to have on a field, whether it be water, med kit supplies, all those things, they would oversee. There would be a, a list of expectations of what that trainer would have to meet when they were hired for that dollar amount, logs for incidents. Right now, our coaches fill out incident reports for any type of injuries that happen at a practice or a game. It would be much more detailed and much more, I think, valuable to have that coming from a trainer who can also analyze some of the information and then report that to the school nurse as it goes through. So there'd be much more involvement than what we're getting for our money now, which is basically coverage at home games where we select them to be at.
Right, and then, I hear what you're saying, it all sounds, it makes, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I, I come back to two questions, which is, we talk about this a lot, and I know a few years ago, we had to let go of a nurse because we didn't have the money in the budget, and, you know, is it, a couple of years ago?
A P N.
What?
It wasn't a nurse, it was an L P N.
An R A, right?
L P N, oh.
Oh, L P N, right.
Yeah.
But, you know, so then I just look at, is this, two questions, is this the most efficient use of our resources in terms of, you know, hire, essentially hiring a full-time trainer, or do we have some staff that could potentially do some, like, we have nurses in the buildings, could they get the training and then do some of the checklist for, I, I mean, you, I don't know why you rolled your eyes, if we're paying someone to be a nurse, they should be able to check and get training, as far as I'm concerned. I'm just purely talking about efficiencies of utilizing our staff.
So just for class, so just for clarification, didn't mean to roll my eyes, I am trying to manage that better, it was just more my thinking. I would just say that where we would have the greatest need is, is with our high school nurse.
Okay.
And Artie and I just had a very lengthy conversation yesterday about how many other responsibilities go on and how many, and how many kids they're servicing. So I wouldn't say that it's impossible, but I guess, I just want us to be reasonable in terms of how much more we can ask the nurses to do in terms of something that I think we're saying is very important and really needs a lot of focus and concentration. So I think we would just really need to assess what's, what we're currently asking people to do and then what this would add.
Could I ask, could I ask a question? I hear your point, but I guess to, to keep things moving and because we have to give direction, is there anybody else on the board that wants to consider taking this out?
I did, because I didn't fully understand, but now I do, and, and I understand, I mean, it's a good point about maybe using people we have here, unfortunately, the hours take you beyond the school hours, and I don't see how a nurse can manage that, do her job during the day and then stay longer, you would have to-
No, all I'm saying, maybe they could do, I, I, look, I, I'm just asking a question, it sounds like to go from 10 to 40 is a lot, it sounds like 1,100 hours is a lot, and then, you know, I'd like, I'd be curious to see how we came up-
But if we don't use it, then we don't spend it, right? I mean, it's what we, it's what we need and what we spend-
True, but then is there something else in the budget? I mean, again, it's-
Because also, the other thing to remember is, this also, right, no, no, that's true. This is evaluated- This is evaluating all concussions, not just sports concussions, because other kids, there are accidents in school, and they get a concussion, and they would also have to follow the same protocol, because that number is actually higher than nine, because we just had a safety meeting today. So that's the only reason why I know that. I mean, ideally, every student at the high school should have a baseline, and your baseline is good for two years. So, that's a lot of testing to do, you know, especially if you're going to do the freshmen coming in, then you have to do the juniors, theoretically, you want to, you need someone to do this, and we, I don't, I mean, I think it's a great idea about the nurse, I just don't see how she could do it.
I guess the only other thing, look, I'm, if, I'm not even sure I want to take it out, I really just trying to get a justification, is there, I'd love to see some backup as to how we came up to 1,142 hours of training time, and I'm sure someone's done that math, and that would be very helpful, because if it makes sense, it makes sense. But, I, you know, not knowing it, it just seemed like a quantum...
Okay, so can we, can we get Robin that information?
We will, I just want to be mindful that, and Robin, as you indicated, you calculated looking at a number of school days, we have athletic competitions that occur on weekends, that they go, that hours wrap around the school day.
I said, I said I was using it as a, I just, I said I was assuming that not every day, and it would be a wash for a back-of-the-envelope calculation, it was just a back-of-the-envelope calculation.
And vacations, and vacations, they play over vacation.
I understand, it was just a back-of-the-envelope to try to put it in some sort of a sense.
No, 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 yeah, yeah.
I do a reasonable test on numbers, but, and that said, the only other thing that I did get calls on was, the, a question came up, Scott Plamals not here tonight, about the sales here, about the behavioral TA. And one of the questions that came up, and I did get a call on it later as well, was some of the parents in the preschool meeting were wondering if we could elaborate on what specific types of training we were looking at giving, because I guess, they felt pretty strongly that, I guess, there, something was mentioned in the meeting about being off, training for kids with autism and versus just general training, so I guess some of the parents got confused and wanted to know a little bit more about that. So is there any way that we can get some more information about the types of training that the behavioral consultant would...
There's still a discussion of the development of training, but there's two different types of consultants, B C B A training, which I believe is one that concerns some of the preschool parents right at that.
Say it again, what is it called?
B, as in boy, two, and cat, the other one, A, and apple.
You know, could you, could you speak into the mic, because I think if the idea is to give the community the information, they might, they might not hear you.
I'm not sure of the mic.
B C B A is acronym, and I'd have to get you exactly what the B C B A stands for, but it is for the, mostly with the autistic population.
Okay.
So that is probably what some of the preschool parents are referencing. However, we're encompassing more than that, not just strictly that model, but we're also still discussing what that professional development will look like for all of those consultants and the psychologists.
Okay. So, kind of putting together a plan now. Okay. Back to that.
Okay, anyone else? Phil, Maria?
Nope. John?
John?
Yes. Just one, one thing to, one, first, one thing to add to what Robin was saying, I think when you're providing whatever information you're going to provide on the trainer, I think it would be helpful to get some detail of, just kind of explaining what the, how the breakdown in duties and time is. I find it still, every time I hear it, confusing how the, what the trainer's role in the concussion management policy is versus all the different other actors in that policy are, so I think it'd be helpful to just see that written down, so we can keep it straight. And just how much of the trainer's time do we anticipate goes to concussion management versus all the other things that we expect him or her to do? Be helpful to have that, I think it's background.
So more of a job, just, a total job description?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to belabor it, but I just think it'd be, I, I still, you know, I've had it explained, but I think it's still, it all sounds good, it all sounds important, but it's hard to keep straight.
I can give you, I can give you a website for the individual, that, I know Chris has talked about, I know he's reached out to various of us, he's a doctor in the community, who's reached out to various of us on this issue in the past. It hasn't really got over...
Well, I think we should have a, something written from the administration, I don't, I don't want to just be told to go talk to somebody.
We're not questioning, we need them, we're saying, just shows how you write it, this number.
I, okay, but I heard, I'm not, Robin, I'll, don't worry. What I heard, what I heard John say is, he wanted an idea about what the person was doing with their time, and I, that's what I was responding to.
Oh, the website would tell me what the trainer would do?
It talks about the concussion management process and the role of the trainer, which was the first part of your, your question.
Well, that sounds more generic than what we're doing this, I just kind of know what, like, know what we would, are planning to do here.
Well, I, I think, I understand the question, and we will provide an answer, and if it doesn't hit the mark, let us know, and we'll clarify.
Okay, no, it's, I'm sure it'll hit the mark.
Okay.
I have a more, a more difficult point to make, I think. You know, we haven't really had consensus, I think, in, among the board on the budget, we've kind of had a majority rules on, you know, piece by piece, and I've consistently objected to the writing. And I've gone away from these meetings, thinking, well, I just kind of want to go along with the majority on this, and, but it bothers me, it really bothers me, the proposal on the writing, and I'm honestly not sure I can support a budget that has the writing in it. I think it's just, I'm just not that, I'm just that unconvinced that it's a good idea, that it's the right way to go about this. And I would much rather defer it and take a hard look with our administration at what our writing program is, and what we're doing, and what the goals are, and how it's succeeded and/or failed so far, rather than putting more money toward it at this point, in a way that I'm definitely not convinced is the right way to go. So, so that's where I, I think I'll depart from consensus, and it's something I potentially feel strongly enough to let that guide my vote on the budget. So I want to, you know, let people know, I don't think it should just be a consensus, I think this has to reflect all of our views, and, well, maybe it should be a consensus rather than a majority rule, and I don't want that, but this is something where, certainly where I come at, the way I, I, my philosophy and how the district should approach things is, is I'm just very uncomfortable with this, even if I'm the only one. So, so that's the point I would make there. And I am saying that very respectful and grateful that our administration has heard the call to do something about the writing, but I just strongly prefer not to go about it this way, at this point. That's it.
Okay, I want to, John's point. You know, we've talked about this before, and I guess, my feeling is just that creating the class would give our kids a better opportunity to get to a better place, but I do hear you, and in fact, one of the things I would like to ask is, you know, maybe to John's point, is there a way to maybe get some information about how we're approaching improving, you know, what, kind of looking at what, what's our plan for, of attack? Since we clearly have identified there is this need, there's clearly a deficiency somewhere, because not every school has this, so do we have a plan of attack in terms of how we're going to identify where the deficiencies are, and how we're going to improve what we're currently doing? And I would hope that we would do it in concert with this class, and then I guess the second piece of that is, and as part of that plan, is this class a long-term thing? Is it a short-term, until we bring it up? I mean, all of that, I think, would be really helpful to see as well, so...
Well, I can answer to you, I wasn't sure if you would just...
Well, I, I don't, I don't think you have to answer, I, I, I tend to agree with what Robin says, I think that looking at it in a vacuum is one thing, and whereas, I come down a little bit differently, that, you know, I tend to trust that there's a plan there, I think it'd be great to hear what, what that plan is. I, I don't think I'd go as far as to say I'm not going to, I mean, we're talking, how much for this budget, how much of, for this class?
123.
So how much money is that?
With benefit, 123.
Okay, I, I wouldn't say that I would consider voting, not voting for a $55 million budget over $123,000, but...
And I'd argue that the point is, the dollar amount is less than that.
Yeah.
Because that also includes, and we wrapped in, remember, in the ASI section with that.
But I, but I think Rob, Robin's overarching point, that understanding how this fits in, when, when being asked for the money to fund the class, is an important thing, and I think, I think we should, we should get that information.
Can I just add a little bit of information, which I think, Chair, at our CAD meeting this week, one of the older students brought up about not feeling prepared, really, on how to study for a test and prepare themselves. And the conversation evolved, where one of the parents was referring to the study skills class in sixth grade, and how sixth-grade study skills are not the same type of study skills you would need studying skills at a high school level. And then that kind of evolved into the high school students talking about the rigor of writing that is required in high school. And the conversation kind of slightly went in the direction that it would be more appropriate to have some sort of writing program at a high school level, rather than a middle school level, like, not to roll it back to a similar program like the study skills class. So I just thought it was very interesting, listening to your comments, and I just thought it was, you know, wanted to share kind of like what the students were sharing, and some of the parents were sharing at the CAD meeting, because I think it was pertinent to this conversation. Because I think a writing class at a high school level is something that we need in this district. I mean, that is something that a lot of the students have talked about when they come back after attending college, is the rigor of the writing.
And I, and I think it's...
And, and, you know, while, you know, there might be areas to improve at the middle school level, writing, I think high school, the level of writing in high school is very different.
And I think it can't...
I think it's two things, in other words.
Well, I, I, well, yeah, I mean, this is a broader discuss, this is, this is...
Yeah, it's a little beyond, yeah.
Well, but, no, but this is, this is the kind of discussion I feel we should, and
a deep discussion that I feel we should have before we start allocating more money to this. That's, that's, I, I, you know, I have no problem at all spending 120 or even substantially more money on writing, because I think that's one of the really critical skills that we want kids to graduate our, our schools with. But I really feel like I want to see the administration, you know, delve into it, and give us a clear evaluation of what we've got, why it's not working, and where we're going with it in a much more holistic way, before we start allocating money to it.
That's a fair point.
Because I'm, I'm just, yeah, that's...
Okay.
Okay, I think, I think we've given you the direction that you need.
Yeah, we have a few areas to follow up on, and we'll get you those answers before the next meeting.
Okay. Our next meeting is Thursday, April 24th, at 7:30 here, but we will also have a special meeting just to deal with addressing the 2014-15 Southwest Boce's budget and member election. It'd be a two-minute public meeting in the district offices.
Oh, anyone who wants to go to the meeting.
Probably on Thursday, yeah, well, sometimes people do show up for this thing.
Why are you, bro?
On Tuesday, April 22nd.
Boce's gigs, we'll show up.
Only if absolutely necessary. I think we have a quorum, right?
Oh, we have a quorum now? Are you the quorum?
Am I the quorum?
You are.
Yes.
Well, if there's one more, I'll, I'll happily skip.
Yeah, no, listen, I'm happy to do whatever.
I get to skip.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm fine.
No, you're there.
All right, can I get a, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Call those in favor?
Aye.